Everyone, wow. The current time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum attending both in person and on a video conference. Notice that this meeting has been posted online and at the Fort Ben ISD Administration Building for at least 72 hours. Our first order of business is our National Anthem. Oh, you know what? I did it again. I got how many more meetings left? And one of these times I'm going to get it right. Officer Walton, please. Sorry.
May I, may I please have everyone's attention? Before the meeting begins, we ask that everyone please silence your cell phones. The Fort Ben ISD Board of Trustees meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, patrons may only address the board during the designated Audience Item section on the agenda. If you have printed materials you want to give to board members, you must provide them to me or any officer present and we will provide them to the board. We also ask members of the audience, be respectful of others by maintaining three feet of distance between each other and remaining quiet so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. Face masks are optional. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Walton. I put a note so when we do the script for next time that that gets in there so I see it. Okay, our next item is our National Anthem.
Very good. We have this evening the Kempner High School Jazz Band and they're going to be performing our National Anthem. If everyone will please stand.
Please remain standing for the silent invocation.
Thank you very, very much to our Kempner students. That was incredible. Thank you for being here and thank you for... Thank you, thank you for that wonderful rendition.
Very good. And I'd like to personally thank our students who participated with us and of course their band director, our head band director, Paul Brunt from Kempner High School. Our students were Brian Gerettel, Haib Nagash, Nicholas Lopland, and Eric Duñrez, who's our assistant director. They were able to participate and perform for us today, so let's have them come in to get a photo with the board. If you will please join me at the bottom of the dais, we will get that photo. Another round of applause. Thank you, board. If you'll stay there at the dais, we've got some outstanding recognition this evening. I'm going to get some help from our Director of Fine Arts, Mr. Jim Drew. He will be introducing our first recognition for this evening and you're going to be very impressed. So, Mr. Drew, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. The Fort Ben ISD Fine Arts Department would like to congratulate the 52 outstanding high school student musicians, and by the way, this is a Fort Ben ISD record, who were selected this year by competitive audition for the Texas All-State Band Choir and Orchestra, sponsored by the Texas Music Educators Association. Students are chosen for this honor by participating in a series of rigorous auditions. Over 70,000 students initially entered the competition process with only 1,875 students earning a seat in one of the 18 all-state ensembles. So, we're going to start with band recognitions first. From Clements High School, Dewey Palmer. Andy Nassar. And directors Jeff Johnson, Brian Waits, Leslie Flynn, and Kate Thane. From the Dulles High School Band, we have Jesse McIntyre. And Catherine Wong. Dulles High School Directors are Joe Pruitt and Arnel DeRit. From the Elkins High School Band, we have CJ Butera. And Justin Way. And Elkins High School Directors are Chad Collins, Joseph Chen, and John Grant. From the Ridge Point High School Band, we have Alex Hori. And Ridge Point Band Director Luis Saldana. And now, we're going to get a picture of all the all-state band students and directors in front of the board. We're going to start with Clements High School. And Sophie Marino. Clements High School Choir Directors are Janet Menzey and Ryan Bogner. From Elkins High School, we have Pari Dewan. And Alessandro Gucardi. The Elkins Choir Directors, John Richardson. And unfortunately, our student from Bush High School, the first all-state students we, student that we've had at Bush High School was sick today, so he's not here. But their director's here, Ariana Sandoval. From Ridge Point High School, we have Kalen Davis. And Isabella Elizondo Coiado. And the Ridge Point Choir Directors are Chelsea Burner and Stuart Gaetan. And from Travis High School, we have Domali Babal. Michael Hall. And Nicholas Papas. And the Travis High School Choir Director is Deborah Seabird. And we'll get a picture with all the choir students now. And finally, the members of the, that made one of the all-state orchestras, we're going to start with Austin High School Orchestra. And our first student is Christopher Foo. Andy Jiang. Christine Lee. Eric Liang. Natalie Su. Nathan Su. And Sophie Chen. Orchestra Directors at Austin High School are Ann Victor and Zoren Yashmak. Next, we have the Clements High School Orchestra. Sage Wong. Guanfa Felix Shen. Andy Zhou. Alex Zhang. Alex Song. Al Ban Wu. Arien Bora. Eon Sinestra. And Ahi Akese. The Clements Orchestra Directors are Neil Springer and Emery Daniel. From Dulles High School, we have Claire Draney. Timothy Feng. Jeffrey Lee. Lilian Liao. Kendall Wu. Tommy Yu. And the Dulles High School Orchestra Directors are Michael Isador and Angela Yip. From Kempner High School, we have Nafi Karim. And the Kempner Orchestra Director, Maria Franklin. And from Travis High School, Ryder Jensen. And Luis Erdaneta. And the Travis High School Orchestra Director is Sabrina Behrens. And if we could get all the orchestra, orchestra students and directors to come back down, we'll take a picture.
All right, hold those smiles. We're going to take the official photo here. Awesome. Congratulations, guys. And thank you to our parents and our school administrators for supporting our students. We've got a couple more recognitions, but we'll let our students clear out. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on with some other recognitions this evening. First, we're going to have the Fort Ben ISD Purchasing and Materials Management Department. They have received the Texas Association of School Board, I'm sorry, Texas Association of School Board Officials, TASBO, Award of Merit. The Award of Merit is, recognizes Texas school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education service centers that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. So, we like to celebrate our amazing team. Can we have the following people come up to receive this recognition? Chief Financial Officer, Brian Gwynn. Executive Director of Business Services, Brenda Essenberg. And from the purchasing team, we have Maya Thornton. Doris Han Yin Wei. Erica Deplicane. Kathleen Booker. Adrian Bolden. Tracy Alexander. Zay Bustista. Outstanding job to this team who does such amazing work for the district. Congratulations on your Award of Merit. We'll go ahead and get a photo so we can be sure to celebrate you and your accomplishments Don't be shy. We're going to get in and do photos. Great job. It's exciting to see our staff get such accolades for the work that they do. Thank you, guys, for being here this evening. For our final recognition, we'd like to invite Ms. Julia Andrews here to the podium. She's the President of the Houston Area Alliance of Black School Educators and she will be presenting our final recognition this evening. and she will be presenting our final recognition this evening.
Good evening, Board President, Trustees, and Superintendent Whitbeck. My name is Julia Andrews, and I'm the President of the Houston Area Alliance of Black School Educators. Today, I would like to recognize Ms. Rhonda Mason, Executive Director of Elementary Schools here in Fort Bend ISD, and our HAPSE President-elect. Forty-eight years ago, 27 African-American superintendents gathered in Michigan and established the National Alliance of Black School Educators. At that time, black school district leaders comprised less than 3% of the national average. Today, black superintendents are approximately 3.7% of the national average. These statistics clearly suggest the need for more black school district leaders. And so, HAPSE endeavored to do its part in addressing this situation with providing a $10,000 scholarship to a qualified student who was pursuing an advanced degree in educational leadership. From a pool of educational leaders throughout the nation, Fort Bend's own Mrs. Rhonda Mason was elected and recognized at the awards banquet in Los Angeles, California. Mrs. Mason is the first ever recipient of the Dr. Patricia Ackerman Leadership Award for her outstanding leadership capabilities, and we could not be prouder. So, on behalf of the Houston Area Alliance of Black School Educators, we would like to congratulate Ms. Rhonda Dean Mason.
Congratulations to Ms. Mason. Thank you. Board, that concludes our amazing recognition this evening. I hope you enjoyed it as much as we did because those kids were awesome. Thank you.
Wow, that was pretty awesome. Congratulations to our students who won all those awards. That was, that was great, as well as our administrators, too. So, that's always the best part of a board meeting. So, okay. We now have our audience items. The Board encourages and welcomes comments and inputs from our patrons. Please limit your comments to three minutes. And please refrain from mentioning a student or employee's name when voicing a concern or complaint as Board Policy provides alternative procedures through the Grievance Process Policies GF Local or DGPA Local to seek resolution to complaints. The Superintendent's Office, Human Resources, and the Administration in general can assist you in finding those procedures online. The following procedures will apply to tonight's audience comments. I will read the name of the person registered to speak and show that they have three minutes to make their comments. Once the speaker starts their comments, the Board Secretary, Dr. Shirley Rose Gilliam, will announce when they have 30 seconds remaining. Once the three-minute time limit has expired, whether the speaker has concluded their comments, Dr. Rose Gilliam will announce that the speaker's time has elapsed. I will then ask you to return to your seat so that the next speaker may have their three minutes to address the board. Okay, our first speaker is Mr. Derek Willis.
Good evening. How y'all doing? My concern tonight is the bus 1088 that goes into Mustang Trails. Okay, subdivision has been under construction for three years. Transportation Department has told us that due to safety issues, the bus cannot come into the subdivision. I've driven the bus for Metro for 22 years. I've driven the bus for HISD for five years. I know what a safety issue is. You come in our subdivision, you bring the elementary kids in, but you won't pick the middle school and the high schools up. You make them walk up to Cartwright and Alverston Way. Why? You had three years to prepare. Three years to prepare. You knew the subdivision was going to be complete. They knew that. You lied to us and said it was a safety issue. It never was a safety issue. Because the same bus, the same bus drivers come in there to pick up the elementary kids. The same ones. What happened to the rest of our kids? They're not important. Their safety is not a concern. You pick them up on a busy street, one way into the subdivision, one way out. In order to drop our kids off, we have to create a traffic jam. So it was unsafe from the beginning. So you use a safety issue to create a safety issue. Why? Why? All I'm asking, they say they couldn't come into the subdivision. They were short-staffed. I say, fine, let's compromise. Give me one block. One block. Come in the neighborhood, make one block, come out. We can't do that. Why? If you're not going to compromise, if you lied to us for three years, then when the subdivision is complete, then oh, we're going to go to a new line now. What are we supposed to do when our kids get hurt? All the apologies in the world is not going to help us. That is an unsafe stop from day one. We've complained to the school. We've complained to the Transportation Department. We've complained to one of the managers.
Three seconds.
We've complained to one of the managers with no results. All I'm asking you, it takes one person, one person in the chain to care about our kids. One person. All I'm asking is for it to be one of y'all to care about our kids. Just one to make something happen. Just one.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. We appreciate you being here tonight. Dr. Whitbeck, could we have someone look into that situation, please? Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Tessa Wolf.
Good evening, President Rosenthal, Dr. Whitback, and the Board of Trustees. My name is Tessa Wolf, and I am the President of the Clements High School FFA Chapter. This is Lily Advertsey, the reporter of our chapter, and her guide dog in training, Nancy. We are addressing the Board tonight to thank you for your continued support of our FFA chapter and chapters all across the district. We wanted to present you with these shirts as a token of our appreciation. We hope that you'll wear them next week to help us recognize National FFA Week. Thank you again for always being here for us.
Thank you, Tessa. I believe you guys have a fundraiser coming up, too, right? Okay, I think you sent that to the Board, so let's make sure we take another look at our emails because it's a nice thing to support, so. Okay, our next speaker is Congressman Pete Olson.
Friends, Board of Trustees, Coachmen, I come to praise Dave Rosenthal, and not to bury him, but I may say a couple of things that get a little bit dirty. As y'all know, Dave has announced he's retiring in 2022. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of people of Fort Bend ISD for what you've done for our kids over your tenure in office. You've had some tough challenges. A tax state flood, another tax state flood, a Memorial Day flood, Hurricane Harvey, Winter Storm Yuri. During the construction of Reese Technical Center, we found 95 victims of the convict labor program. Let's sugar that 95. Some contractors went to Willeridge High School in the summer, turned off the air conditioner, went off the weekend, came back in Monday morning. Guess what? Poisonous mold all over the campus. Had to shut that school down for a year and put those kids with their rivals at Marshall High School. That's like putting Aggies and Longhorns together in a class for one entire year. And I know you felt like you've been in the Navy sometime because you've been cussed out like a sailor by people disagree with what you're doing here in Fort Bend. But Dave, you've persevered and made Fort Bend County the greatest county in this school district, the best one in the entire nation. And this school is the most, school district the most diverse in the country. Over 100 languages are spoken here, 100. And Dave, you're going to make that 101. It's a form of English that's not taught anywhere on one of our campuses. But Dave is going to be wearing, playing with a biscuit and a stick, wearing a bucket and a sweater, having a dust with some colleagues or some challenges, call people hosers, and spend time in what's called the sin bin. Yes, this man loves to play hockey.
Thirty seconds.
I do have one gift for Dave. It's a gold hockey puck on behalf of the school board here. Now, I'll close with one great story about why you guys made this place so special. Jim Rice has passed, and I left Fort Bend County about a decade ago. His house was sold to an Asian-American PhD from Boston. Came down here without his family, walked in the house and said, "I have three questions about this house." This house is owned to
Time.
Commonwealth Elementary. So, new Fort Summit Middle School, zone to Clements High School. I'll take it. That school sold Fort Bend. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Dave Rosenthal. Let's play some hockey together sometime.
Sounds good. Sounds good, Pete. Anytime. Thursday nights or Sunday nights. Thank you so much, Congressman. I appreciate that. You've, you've made my week, and I really appreciate you coming here. Awesome. Okay, that concludes our audience items. Our next item is information. We have our annual PASA demographic update.
Good evening. This evening, we have representatives from the district's demographer, population and survey analysts, also known as PASA. And tonight, they will provide an overview of the 2022-23 demographic update. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Stacy Tapera and Justin Silhavy to begin the presentation.
Here we go. All right, that's better. I'll try to speak into this, although no promises here. It's really far away. All right. So, here we are again, and I know we've been dealing with a loss of enrollment, so let's just jump right into it. Not going to hold back. The pandemic affected enrollment. This is year two we're talking about it, and you're not the only ones. I have another slide here next that shows a little bit of that. But I've been starting every client's first slideshow off with this very same slide and over the last two years. You're still dealing with it. We still estimate there could be anywhere between 2,000 and 2,500 students missing. Where they are, whether or not they're returning, it's a great question. We don't know yet. But what we do know is that they aren't here, and we've, you know, had to determine how many new students should have enrolled based on new housing, based on trends, and we've still landed at this number somewhere between 2,100 and 2,500 not enrolled. We've had charter school expansions a lot this year. We'll get into that later. And another hot topic that I will be discussing tonight are new developments mostly north of Highway 90 in the district. We talked last year about some of these last pieces of land to develop. Three of them have taken new ownership in the last 12 to 18 months, and we have a lot going on that will kind of complete development in the district in the north. So I mentioned this impact of COVID on enrollment. What I have here are three school districts, three of our clients throughout the state. The top three have had tremendous impact, ranging between 1,200 and roughly 2,000 or so students still out of the classroom, potentially at home, potentially enrolling in alternative virtual programming throughout the state. So you're not alone. Everyone has kind of missed the mark this year, especially districts that don't have as much new housing. I know you still have a lot of new housing, but the truth is, your existing housing stock far outweighs the number of new homes in this district. You are a mature district for all intents and purposes. So, you can see here in the Houston region, really Fort Bend and Klein have had a big hit on enrollment. You two are high-growth districts that are really built out for the most part, roughly. So I know you still have a lot of housing, and we're going to talk about it, but that's really my take on it. And the truth is, we've seen a lot of districts in your same situation, typically out in suburbia, that where maybe the wealth ratio is a little higher than others. Maybe families have the opportunity to stay home from COVID. So that's where we're at. I'll get to our long-range planning growth scenarios later in the presentation to talk about that a little more. But real quickly, employment's recovering quite rapidly this year. The Greater Houston Partnership expects us to be back to full pre-pandemic job levels by, eh, third quarter or so. We're already at 80% recovery. And new home construction continues at a brisk pace. Low mortgages have really, really led to this acceleration of housing. I don't want to dwell on demographic characteristics too much. You know, we talk about this all the time, and the Chapter 1 in your report has more information than you could ever ask for if you want to look at some of these facts and figures. But I will point to the very first arrow there, your median age. We continue to see this tick upwards in this district, and what that means is people stay here longer. And so, the age of the residents is older. It's above the metro average, over 37 now, meaning you have fewer students in some of these neighborhoods where people choose to live and stay. Numerically, in the last five years, now, we don't have this year's data for every school district, but going back from 2015 to 2020, Fort Bend ranked number eight with over 3,600 new students enrolled. So out of 61 school districts in metro Houston, you're number eight in terms of five-year growth. Your neighbors to the west, by the way, are now number one this year in terms of number one fastest-growing school district in the state of Texas with about 3,000 students. That's Lamar CIST. So the growth continues to push west. In terms of the 20 largest school districts, you're number four with negative growth from 19 to 20. So even with all the COVID losses, you still didn't rank, you didn't lose as many students as other school districts. You can see some of those below you, such as Klein and Pasadena, are still struggling to recapture all their students. That was growth from 19 to 20. Annual growth rates in Fort Bend, very much aligned with the state. We had a 2.2% decline in 2020. You guys had a 1.3% decline. Some of that's been recaptured. That negative bar there, that's your elementary growth, or in this case, loss in 2020. And you can see the recovery in 2021 is nowhere close to that big bar. So you're still missing mostly elementary-age students. Those are who did not show up, and that's who we're still missing. I talk a lot about births every year, and I don't know if any of you recall. I know a lot of you are new, but three, four, or five years ago, we were watching a birth increase, and it happened. Now, the problem is, it happened during COVID. So we knew that we were about to have a surge in kindergarteners, and in 2019, we did. So we knew that we were about to have a surge in kindergarteners, and in two thousand and nineteen, we did. It was supposed to continue into two thousand and twenty, but unfortunately, COVID happened. They're still out there. So we saw a little bit of an increase this year, in fact, in the kindergarten. So we're still anticipating that to kind of tick upwards. The question is going to ultimately be how many of them do choose to come back. So now we not only have COVID to deal with, we also have charter schools and influx of them moving into Fort Bend I S D. And I'll get to that in a second. But we have seen a statewide decline in births. That's that birth plateau. Your district still has a lot of housing growth. So you're not gonna necessarily see a large decline in births like some districts such as Klein or others, but you may not see the growth continue as much due to this slower birth rate. So let's talk about housing. And real quick, for anyone new on the board, one thing that we do, I'm gonna tell you a couple of things, actually. We take a look at all new developments. We don't just look at what's happening today. We take a look at the active developments and we actually have a live count of number of homes under construction, homes that are still in the pipeline. We want to know exactly how many homes are occupied when we get your student data. And what that does is it helps us understand on average, how many students live in each home, in each and every single neighborhood and apartment. That helps us formulate future projections because every neighborhood's different. Some take in Sienna have about one student per home. Other neighborhoods, half that many. Depends on the price point, it depends on the neighborhood, it depends on the school, it depends on the region. So that's one thing we do. We actually have someone who goes out into the neighborhoods to find that count every year. Another thing we do is we don't just look at what's happening today. So we know that Sienna is building today. You know, you can drive through it, you can drive through Caldwell Ranch and see that. But we want to also know what's on the books. So we talk with the cities in your district. We talk to sometimes land brokers and land owners. We talk to developers. If we see that someone bought a piece of land, we want to know what their plans are with that. So we look forward, not backward. So we know how many homes are left to build out, and we know how many are coming and possibly when, if we can get our hands on that information. So with that said, this map, hopefully you might be able to see it a little better on your screens. It's a little dark on this projector. It breaks the district out into what we have called planning units. We take your attendance zones, we break them up. Those are little small geographic enumeration units that we can essentially use for future planning. These red hotspots are the next year's growth of housing. So there are a couple of hotspots here. I've highlighted them, they're all in the south. Caldwell Ranch and Sienna, both of those planning units, that's only part of Sienna, by the way, the southwestern part, are projected to have over three hundred housing units occupied between October and October. We project to October of every school year because October is when your official snapshot to the state of Texas gets submitted. So we know you start out with fewer students in August and September, and you gradually increase to a higher number at snapshot, the last week of October. So those two neighborhoods are your highest growth areas in the district. We have a few others smattered around up in the north. Aliana is, the gas is running out on Aliana, they're about to be built out. So that's that one little orange area on the Grand Parkway after all these years. So that's just one year of growth. This next map is your five-year growth projections by planning unit. You have a lot more hotspots. The ones I've pointed out in the north are two, actually, three new developments. Last year, what I was saying was, we don't have anymore. Once Aliana, once Harvest Green is built out, we're done. But these last few remaining pieces of land have sold. So the Bono Track that we've been watching, its basic bisnet will slice through it going east-west, connecting Harlem and fourteen-sixty-four. That will be about thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred homes. I think Taylor Morrison has named it now, Trivium, maybe, you might hear that. But that's a new development coming. Harvest Green is about to start construction, maybe they already have broken ground, actually, on about fourteen hundred additional homes as well. And a new developer, Maristim Communities, is planning a, quote, "agra hood", that's what they're calling it, of about eight hundred single-family townhome lots south of the prison. So this little area here has about thirty-six hundred new lots planned, and I'll be honest, they're going to build out rapidly. Harvest Green, Taylor Morrison's Bono Track, expect build out in the next four to five years because all of the other land around here, all the other developments are essentially built out. And so everyone's going to be searching for these new homes in that area, and these are the two developments that will provide that. In the south, you know, the narrative has been for the last half decade, keep watching the south because it's coming, it's coming, and it's here, it's here, it's here. These neighborhoods just line up and down, five-twenty-one, they're, they're, they're just in full steam. I could just sit here and name them off, but you can read them. And Sienna continues with still over five thousand homes to build out. So that's where over fifty percent of your growth is in this school district throughout the tenure period. That little tiny corner in the very far south along the five-twenty-one corridor. Apartments, most of the planned apartments are in the Grand Parkway corridor over the next five years. And then there's, you know, some that are just kind of scattered throughout the district, which is a great thing. It's good to have developments scattered across the district so that one school isn't affected. But some of these apartments in the Grand Parkway corridor are coming, and they're coming quickly. I'm sure you've had principals already, you know, screaming about it around Harvest Green. There's a couple of schools where they'll be located. So those are all projected for as well. So a couple of points to hit in terms of new housing. One, I mentioned these three new neighborhoods around the Jester Unit, Harvest Green, Bono Track, the Maristim Community, rapid build out, especially of Harvest Green and the Taylor Morrison Track. Southeast Fort Bend I S D, I already mentioned it as well, Sienna has fifty-four hundred homes left to build out. We've got almost three thousand homes left to build out in those four neighborhoods, or three neighborhoods, Caldwell Ranch, Huntington Place, and Glendale Lakes. And that's where over half of all projected single-family is in the school district. Multifamily, we're projecting about a thousand students a year, district-wide approximately. And that fourth bullet point there, I'll get to in a second, but basically you've hit your peak housing in this district. It will slow down every year from now on, and we had been projecting that for a while. You probably hit it about a year and a year and a half ago. And that's what I'm talking about here. The purple bars go back to two thousand and sixteen, those were your actual single-family housing occupancies. So you can see you were trekking along with three thousand, even hit four thousand two years ago. It dropped this year. You had a lot of neighborhoods building out, particularly in the north part of the district. So every year, you're gonna stay stable for a while. We have all these new developments coming online that I mentioned in the north, but then those will slowly start to build out as well. So you're, you've been used to and accustomed to three thousand homes a year, but by the end of the projection period, do not be surprised if you're already under a thousand homes a year. You will start reaching that build-out phase of Fort Bend I S D. So I mentioned students per home matter. That's one reason we actually count the number of occupied homes on the ground at a certain date, and they do. On average, every single-family home in Fort Bend has about point-five-one students in it, meaning for every one hundred homes, fifty-one K-through-twelve students or pre-K-through-twelve. Multifamily, quite a bit less, at point-three-five. Not every neighborhood have this, has this average ratio. Some new neighborhoods have much higher, some have none. If it's an age-restricted community, it'll be zero. So that, that does matter as we take projections into account. We want to make sure we know what's happening today and what the trend is so we can project housing and students forward into the future. Overall, your ratio of students per home has been declining. We've been tracking it now for quite, quite some time. You can see that line going down. Again, that median age matters that I mentioned early on. As the median age increases, if people don't leave, if people like living here, they're going to stop having children, they're going to get older. And that's what's happened in a lot of neighborhoods. We've seen it historically in Sugar Creek. It's happening in New Territory, it happens everywhere. Fort Bend is very popular, so people stay. All right, the next four slides are really about charter schools. And this is probably the, the largest charter school conversation I've ever had with you guys, but it's really important this year. I show this every year. What this means, it's a breakout, it's an estimate, it's never perfect, but it's an estimate of how many students attend each type of school. We believe there are close to ninety thousand resident K-through-twelve students in this district. And that's based off of the number of students attending Fort Bend and the number of students attending private schools, attending charter schools, and those students who live here but transfer to other school districts. And that's broken out there, those bottom three numbers are the most important. We believe, based on our surveys, that close to forty-nine hundred students in this district attend private schools. And for the first time ever, I believe, the charter school estimate is now above that number. So there are an estimated nearly five thousand students attending charter schools, five thousand Fort Bend residents. And then another eighteen hundred or so students living in this district going to other schools, for instance, Stafford High School. That's a really big transfer out school. So you actually get about eighty-six to eighty-seven percent of the resident K-12 students. Let's talk about expansions. I've never had a list this large for Fort Bend, but here we go. There are five clusters. I'm calling them clusters, so bear with me, I've never used this term before, but that's about the only thing I can think of to explain it because the charters are tending to now cluster elementaries, middle, and high schools together. They may not be adjacent, but they're essentially serving the same communities. So the first cluster I'm talking about is Harmony Sugarland. We know they're building a new high school on Old Richmond Road. At the same time, we also know that their West Airport High School is going to be converted into an elementary. What that means, there are going to be more spaces open up for elementary students in the very short term, next year. That's in the northeast part of the district. Harmony, the Harmony Katie Cluster, or think about Grand Parkway and West Park Tollway. New High School, it's actually in Lamar C I S D on Bel Air, but it's very close to Fort Bend. All grade levels are essentially going to expand because their current two campuses, right on the other side in Katie I S D, will now have more space, there will be essentially more space in every grade level. So you could see just some students trickling into every single grade with this additional capacity. The Kip Cluster on Highway six, kind of right at the Aleve border. Academy West High School, that's gonna be a new nine-twelve. So you could essentially see eighth graders who currently attend the Kip Middle School just continue into ninth grade instead of actually going into, say, Kempner or Bush or Austin or Travis. Number four is a big one. That's IL Texas Fort Bend. We didn't know where it was going to be until a little birdie told me that they purchased land on FM three-fifty-nine. I've confirmed it with the county clerk's office. So around Pecan Grove, just south of Plantation Drive. It looks like IL Texas is planning to build a K-eight. They had an amendment last summer, and it's planned for about fourteen hundred students. So this is essentially on the border of Lamar and Fort Bend I S D. And I'll tell you this, historically, we've seen about four of them open throughout the state, maybe more, actually. But when IL opens, they can start construction in March and be open in July. It currently is, there's a cow on the field right now. I actually drove by it today. But do not be surprised if they start it up. Their amendment said they wanted to open it up this next school year. Now, doesn't mean they will. They have slowed down with their growth over the last few years, but if they do get it open next year, you could see half those students enroll from Fort Bend I S D, maybe the other half from Lamar. I don't know, it's hard to say. But that could affect your campuses in that far western part of the district. Historically, when they open, they open fully. They don't stagger, they don't open with just K-through-two like Kip does. They open with all grade levels and they fill it up instantly. When West Park opened, it's the K-five, I believe, in Aleve, right on the border, they opened in a temporary building, they couldn't get the facility open in time. So they opened in an old strip center temporarily, so that could happen too, I guess. I don't know. Haven't been able to talk to them. Bullet five, those are three schools that are already open, and they are just going to continue to expand. Kip Journey, that's actually in Fort Bend on Florence. Mosaic is at ninety in Hillcroft, and Houston Classical is on Attics Clotting, I believe. So in the next five years, well, let's, let's look back to two thousand and fifteen. According to T E A transfer data, Fort Bend, students going to charter schools who live in Fort Bend, that number has increased by seventy-one percent. So there have been about two thousand to twenty-one hundred students in addition to those in two thousand and fourteen that have moved into charter schools. The next five years, we're projecting sixteen hundred or so students to enroll. It could be more if there are new charter schools that form in the next year or two that we just don't know about today. So the numbers are staggering. You guys are kind of on that periphery where they're building. You're not the only district, we're dealing with this everywhere, but you're getting hit hard. So this chart shows, the blue line is your charter school transfers. Basically, students who live here attending charter schools going back to two thousand and fourteen, you can see the line keeps going up. So if you go back five, six years, it was only three thousand. It's approaching, it's over five thousand now. This is straight from the T E A. The orange line is your transfer number to other school districts. That's been very stable, hasn't really increased that much. So this growth scenario chart here, it's wild. Normally, the very first few years of the projection period, the difference between the low, the moderate, and the high is very tight. We pretty much know what's going to happen. But when you factor in all of these charter school expansions, the continued loss of students from COVID, there's a big gap between the low, moderate, and high. Last year, we didn't know what was going to happen with COVID, if you recall. There was a lot of discussion about, well, how many students are gonna come back? Over the summer, I swore you were gonna see fifty, sixty percent return. But then what happened? July hit and another wave came about. You know, I'm not gonna stand up here and guess. We've put these in the low, moderate, and high growth scenario for a reason because we don't know what's going to happen. Two years have gone by, and some of these students may never come back. We've just accepted that fact, and not just with Fort Bend, but everywhere. They may have found alternative virtual schooling. But anyway, going back to our growth scenarios, we're under, we're at seventy-seven-six today. Well, that was October, maybe it's different now. You could be looking at a moderate growth, most likely scenario of about eighty-three thousand, three hundred and forty, five years from now. And the growth really starts to slow as time goes on, and we've been watching this for a while, continued charter growth and that housing growth slowing down. You're not going to see these increases anymore. And I'll be honest, that low-growth scenario could easily be met if you continue seeing charter school growth. So the next slide here really outlines next year, that, that one-year projection that budgeting and finance worries about, right? Seventy-seven thousand, six fifty-one, that's where we were in October. Under a low-growth scenario, we see that going up to seventy-eight-three. And what, what are our two biggest bullet points there? I mentioned them already. IL Texas, some of these other charter school expansions, depending on what happens if they actually build and open, how many students they pull from Fort Bend versus how many get pulled from Aleve, Katie, and Lamar. Also, the COVID recapture. We've assumed under the low-growth scenario that next year, twenty percent of those students still missing, those two thousand and twenty-five hundred students return. Just twenty percent. Moderate growth, it assumes that IL Texas does not open. And I'll tell you why, because when we put the moderate growth scenarios together months ago to give to budgeting and finance, we did not know about IL Texas. We didn't know where it was gonna be located. We know now, so we factored that into the low growth. But they may not get it open. We've also assumed that the housing market remains stable this year. We don't see any signs of it deflating anytime soon, but we've had to assume it will continue on its current trajectory. We've also assumed there will be a forty percent return of those two thousand to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred students still missing. So you could see over seventy-nine thousand students in the moderate growth, most likely scenario. It really depends on what IL Texas does, I believe. High-growth scenario, IL Texas does not open. Seventy-five percent COVID recapture. I'm not sure if that will happen just because I believe personally, a lot of people have found alternative schooling. I have no proof to that, though, unfortunately. I wish I did. So Stacy. So Stacy's going to get up here and talk about how this reflects on your campuses with short-term and long-range planning, and I'll come back for a Q and A in a second.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay, I've broken this next section into short-term and long-term planning because you've received now a lot of information from Justin about what all goes into our projections, and there's a lot. The binders that are waiting for you in the back are particularly thick this year, so there's a lot of good background information. But how does this turn into students? How is this applied in this case, in the short term? This map shows you the utilization that we are projecting for campuses next year. Now, this is enrollment. So for those of you who have not heard this presentation a thousand times, we project resident students. We talk a lot about where students are going to live, and we can't project where you are going to move a program or where people are going to, parents are going to teach and choose to transfer their students. And so we project resident student population. And then, one year forward, in order to help you with your budgeting and staffing processes, we incorporate those transfers one year forward. So these that you're looking at now are one-year forward enrollment. This includes all of the transfers as best we can estimate from last year. So you see the red schools have the most overcrowding projected for next fall. And I understand that next month, you will hear a report on basically how the district is going, is planning to handle this overcrowding situation. But in the far northwest, Sagin and Oakland are projected at about 110% utilization. And Commonwealth, of course, at 130%. But of course, the big focus is the southeast in Sienna in the 521 corridor, with Leonetti at one and a third schools, basically, worth of students. And Heritage Rose at about 114% utilization. At the middle, whoops, at the middle school level, we see similar patterns in that Bowie in the northwest is at 97% utilization, where Thornton in the southeast in Sienna is over 100% with 107% utilization. And finally, at the high school level, similarly, Travis in the northwest at 112% utilization, Elkins slightly over at 104%, and Ridge Point up to a whopping 122%. Now, bear in mind that this includes or takes into account the cap and overflow for all schools, but particularly in this case for Ridge Point overflowing to Hightower. And that's why Hightower is showing up at 97% utilization because all new students that weren't eighth graders in the district that are moving in will, into the Ridge Point attendance zone, will attend Hightower as they have for a number of years. So this is short-term. This is what staff is using for planning and staffing next year. But now, even more importantly, and for our purposes and utilizing all of the information you just heard from Justin, is the long-term planning. And so this will get back to resident students. So again, projecting, everything I report will be students who live in each of these attendance zones. This heat map is similar to what you've seen before because the growth in housing that you saw earlier is in the same locations as the growth in students, of course. Up in the northwest, the Bono Tract that has recently sold, and of course Harvest Green with its growth and its recent expansion. And the far southeast along the 521 corridor. So I'm going to start sounding like a broken record. This is where the hotspots of growth are and have been and continue to be for the following several slides. But what does this mean for the, at the elementary level? Which schools is this impacting? So we have the same hotspots you just saw, but now have overlaid the attendance zones over these hotspots. So as you can see, Sagin and Patterson and Neal up in the north have the concentration of high growth in the northwest. And in the southeast, Leonetti and Heritage Ridge, of course, Heritage Rose, sorry, of course, have the concentration of student enrollment growth, population growth. But how much space is available in those schools, and how does that relate to the number of students that we're projecting there? So 10 years out, at the end of this projection period, if nothing were to change as far as schools or attendance zones, and all of these students came up, then Neal would be at 183 capacity, the percent utilization. Basically, almost two schools' worth of students in Neal. Patterson at 151% utilization. That's, again, the Bono Tract is in Patterson, and Harvest Green is in Neal. So those are the focuses of overcrowding in the northwest. In the southeast, Leonetti will have almost two and a half schools' worth of students living in what is currently the Leonetti Attendance Zone in 10 years. But Heritage Rose really takes the cake. There are almost four schools' worth of students projected to live within the current Heritage Rose Attendance Zone. That means Heritage Rose plus three more in 10 years. So because no school exists in a vacuum when we're talking about population, it's important for us, when we're making a recommendation about what to do about this overcrowding, it's important for us to consider what's happening in a slightly more global sense because, again, no school is in a vacuum. So let's start on the northwest. The growth in Neal and Patterson is significant, but notice that there are other schools around it that are not growing, and if we go back to the previous slide, that have some space available 10 years out. So if we were to look at this green outline area in the northwest and added up all the resident students that we project to live there in 10 years and compare that to the cumulative capacity of all of those schools together. So if we could magically put a student in every seat within that green area, then we would have, we are projecting to have an excess of almost 1,000 students in that green area. If we could magically rezone and optimize all of the existing campuses that we have now, we're still short one school's worth of students in 10 years. So for this reason, it's our recommendation that one new school somewhere in that green area is sufficient to accommodate the projected student population if there's some other rezoning that accompanies it in order to best maximize the existing capacity. In the Riverstone area, the Butcher Elementary that's planned, is planned to take care of the overcrowding currently seen at Commonwealth. And along the Fort Bend Tollway Parkway area, the growth in Park's Edge and also a future potential subdivision in that area means that in 10 years, we're projecting an excess of 500 or so students. So towards the end of this projection period, if the district chooses to build on the site that they own in Park's Edge, it could be utilized with some additional rezoning of the area. But finally, the kicker, of course, is the southeast in the 529 region. So as I mentioned earlier, with the Heritage Rose overcrowding, if we add up all of the students projected to live in that green area, so that's Schiff, Sienna Crossing, Scanlon Oaks, Leonetti, and Heritage Rose. All of those students, compared to the capacities of all of those schools, the students will exceed the capacity by 3,300 students in 10 years. So again, that's three to four schools in the next 10 years, elementary schools. So let's move on to middle schools. You see similar hotspots, but at the middle school level, that's concentrated in Bowie and Crockett. And at the, on the southeast, it's all in Thornton. Thornton is the lucky winner of all of that growth in the 529 corridor. What does that look like compared to the capacities of those schools? In 10 years, Bowie will be looking at 134% utilization, and Thornton will be looking at a whopping 200% utilization. That's two schools within, two schools' worth of students will live within Thornton's Attendance Zone in 10 years. So again, we get back to the, let me go back to the utilization. The growth in Bowie is going to yield an extra third of a school in Bowie, right? If Bowie's at 134% in 10 years, that's an extra one-third school's worth of students in excess. But look at Crockett next door with 75% utilization in 10 years. So even more so, if we include Garcia and Hodges Bend in this group analysis and draw that green line around all four of those schools, the students in 10 years is actually less than the total capacity of those four schools. So that tells us that if we can do some rezoning of the northwest area at the middle school level, we can more fully utilize the existing facilities that we have and avoid the need to build a new middle school because the capacity exceeds the projected student population by 650. Now, on the southeast end, it's a very different story, of course. The magnitude of growth in the 529 corridor is just so much greater. So if we do the same comparison, total students compared to combined capacity, the students exceed capacity in 10 years by 1,500 students. So that right there tells you that Middle School 16 is certainly necessary and can be well utilized within this decade. And Middle School 16 is owned, a site is owned by the district currently and could well be utilized in the next few years. So at the high school level, again, we're back to those same hotspots. This time, they're concentrated in Travis and Ridge Point, of course. What does that look like compared to the utilization? Travis is, in 10 years, projected to be at 136% utilization, whereas Ridge Point is over 200%. Two and a third schools' worth of students living within the Ridge Point Attendance Zone in 10 years. But importantly, up in the northwest, notice that Bush is projected to be at 87% utilization, Austin at 86%, and Kempner at 65% utilization. So if we draw our green line around those four schools and say that if we can do some rezoning at the high school level to balance out that population compared to those capacities, then we could have an excess of 600 students, I'm sorry, 600 extra seats more than the students we project to live in the far northwest of the district. So for that reason, we are not necessarily recommending that a new high school or a new middle school is necessary in the northwest in the next 10 years, simply because you're so close to build-out and because you have the facilities nearby. Nobody likes rezoning, and it's painful and it's difficult, but if you have the facilities and the best way to be financially responsible is to use the space that you have, right? So our recommendation is not to build new facilities in the northwest, except for the one elementary school. But in the southeast, remember I told you, 229% utilization at Ridge Point, and Hightower was lower, but also has the transfers into it because of the programs and currently the overflow from Ridge Point. Regardless, if you put all, if you assume you could perfectly balance the population between those two schools, you would still have an excess of 2,500 students, almost 2,600 students. So that right there is your extra high school. That is Crawford High School coming. So the green area around Ridge Point and Hightower is ultimately going to, in 10 years, going to be home to students to fill three schools, Ridge Point, Hightower, and Crawford, regardless of how you draw those attendance zones. So to summarize, what I've told you is, at the elementary level, the plans for Butcher Elementary and Riverstone are underway. Sometime in the next 10 years, four elementary schools can be used in that 529 corridor south Sienna area. One in the northwest in order to relieve Neal and Patterson, and then possibly along the Fort Bend Parkway area in Parks Ridge with some additional rezoning as well. At the middle school level, Middle School 16 in the southeast in the Ridge Point area, and rezoning in the northwest between Bowie and Crockett. And at the high school level, the opening of Crawford High School in the southeast can't happen fast enough for Ridge Point, but also the rezoning in the northwest among Travis, Bush, and Kempner and Austin, if at all possible to relieve that overcrowding at Travis. So with that, we will take any questions. Justin can join me here, and you can fire away.
Okay. Thank you all. Thorough, scary. Trying to think of some other words. But do we have questions, concerns? Ms. Henon?
Yes, Stacy, thank you. Can you just, I want to make sure that the heat maps that you showed us that you just walked through, you said those do include, to the best of your knowledge, the transfers from programs?
The early, the early maps that I showed for short-term planning
Okay.
Include transfers, yes.
Okay.
For next year only.
Oh, okay, okay.
All of the long-term planning that are looking out 10 years, do not take those into account because you can move a program and we would
Sure, sure, sure. And actually, I was going to ask Dr. Whitbeck if that's one thing. I know we won't look at this necessarily again until next year, but when we do look at it, if there's a way that we could possibly have current, you know, our current situation of enrollment at each campus, and then delineate that out by programs, just so we could have a better sense of, you know, here are kids at Settlers Way that are part of the DeFEd co-op, or here, you know, the number of transfers, for whatever reason, you know, parents work there, or that kind of thing. That would just help me as I look through this. Nobody else might need it, but it would, I thought it would be helpful.
Yes, we can easily provide that.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted clarification, and I'm sorry, sir, what was your name again?
Justin.
Justin. You said something about Stafford High School in terms of transfer, and I just, my brain didn't process it. What were you saying about Stafford High School?
Yeah, so basically, what I'm talking about here, that number on the very bottom, the students attending nearby districts.
Okay.
1,800. That's coming from TEA. So 1,800 students who live here are estimated to be transferring to other school districts, traditional ISDs.
Okay.
So Stafford, Houston, Pearland, Alvin, Lamar, Katy. And so I just know off the top of my head that Stafford High School is a very popular high school that students who live here transfer to.
Okay.
I can't remember the exact number. I want to say it's
Do we have access to those numbers?
We sure do.
Okay.
Sure do.
Because that was, that's also interesting to me because I'm wondering, like, how many of our families from, you know, Shadow Creek Ranch are in Pearland, you know, how many do we have in Stafford?
In fact, I'm fairly certain, everything blurs together, but I think about three weeks ago, I did send the administration a list of transfer schools, the number of students transferring to each campus.
Okay, so they do have that?
Yes, Tiffany would know.
Okay, thank you very much. And let me see if I have any more questions for you. Actually, my only other question is actually about Shadow Creek Ranch. Is half of that neighborhood in Fort Bend and half is in Pearland I.S.D.?
About, only a fifth is in Fort Bend I.S.D. A big portion is in
Is in Pearland.
Alvin I.S.D., actually. It's the city of Pearland, but in Alvin I.S.D.
I'm sorry, okay.
It's that weird piece of Alvin that goes toward Beltway 8.
Okay, thank you, thank you both.
And traditionally, there have been very, very few students attending Fort Bend I.S.D. from Shadow Creek Ranch. That's a question we get asked all the time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, is it not correct that Alvin
Also, is it not correct that Alvin changed their policy a few years ago and now do allow out-of-district students to enter in, in that area, whereas I believe they did not use to allow that?
Okay.
So that's, that's one change. Also, I'll mention that Stafford Municipal School District is one of the few open enrollment school districts in the area. Most districts do not do that because you know that you may get, but you may also lose, and so most just don't tend to do that. But Stafford has set up because it's very small and it's very, you know, in one complex that they have opened up. That's a little bit of a difference as well.
Right. And Dr. Whitbeck, if we could have that list, I think the, I, I know that I would find that interesting to see what, what public schools our, our kids are choosing to, to go to.
Right. And if for some reason I didn't add non-charter schools that list, just let me know and I'll send it.
And then, you know, I don't even know what, I don't even know what kind of comment to make about the charter schools, but thank you for the information. It's, it's a lot to process.
It is, and I, I'll just say it's very difficult to keep up with. And, and it, it can change on a dime.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. Mrs. Day?
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. So I wanted to know, do you have a data for homeschool kids? You have private and charter?
The state of Texas does not keep track of homeschool children. We, we, we can find out how many students are in virtual programs. For instance, I, I believe there are seven. For instance, Texas Connections at Houston ISD, that's one with 8,000 students. A few school districts have a contract with others.
Yeah.
But we don't have data, it's always a year late, right? So, you know, we know the last couple of years, there's been an influx, but we don't have the data for this year yet. So that's it, you know? We have, we, and it's not even complete. I'm going to be the first one to tell you, Texas Connections does not keep great track of where the transfers are coming from.
Oh, really?
Any student living in Texas can enroll?
And they don't track which school district they come from? Is that, is that-
Some of them, yeah. Some of them do a better job than others, and I, I'm not quite sure why Texas Connections just doesn't. I, I never see that school pop up on any transfer list.
Got it. So that, we're talking about that K-12?
Well, grade three through 12.
Yeah, grade three to 12.
Correct. In Texas, you have to be, virtual schools start at grade three.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. And I do have a question regarding to how you, like, do the, the green cluster. So first, I want to confirm on the, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't see a page number. For example, the Quail Valley Middle School, is that 29%?
In 10 years.
In 10 years, is-
Remember that there, the, the Quail Valley population is already small because the GT program transfers in.
Yeah, but this number already inc, including the-
10 years out.
10 years out, it's out. Okay, got it. So, but, okay, so my, my question would be, so when you do the green cluster, put it, so is there, like, what do you follow? Like, how do you decide, or you just?
I just kind of use logic. Like, I didn't want to, to go too far away, but I tried to think if, if students could move from school X to school Y, and then from Y to Z-
Yeah.
-then, then that would be feasible.
Okay. So the reason I'm asking, for example, for the middle school long-range planning, you have Thornton and Baines and then Lake Olympia, and then you have a Quail Valley right there. So I'm just wondering, you didn't cluster four of them instead of you cluster two of them? No, I'm, I'm just curious if you have a certain reason behind it, that's how you cluster them together?
For the, for the southeast, the Baines and Thornton cluster, that was just because that's all of Sienna and the, the rest of the Thornton.
So I guess for the, you, you use the same logic for high school? Okay.
And basically because Elkins is full, and so it wouldn't do any good to, to include Elkins in the, in the association because they don't have room to take any students.
Because, the reason I'm asking, okay, again, because probably that's because Dulles, we have the academy, that's why it's showing 63%. So actually, number probably is higher than this, right?
Okay.
I'm talking about 2031 to 2032, 10 years.
Okay, so the 10-year out doesn't include any of the academies?
Yeah.
Those kids are counted in the schools where they live?
Yes, so that's why, because, okay, I just, yeah.
High Tower shows up as, as having 73% utilization.
Yeah, so Dulles too, it's a 60, 63%. Actually, probably will be higher if we keep the program there.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's, that's all the question I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Malone?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentations. Very informative. My, I am getting to touch on the charter school expansion a bit, and I would love, do you happen to have a map with those schools overlaid on top of ours?
We do. Chapter three, if you look to the end of it, it's the current students tab.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Stacy, you'll find a page number. There is a map. Most of, I believe even the future ones are on there. I'll double check, but yes. And here's the deal, I, the way I named them on the slide here in these clusters, I'm sorry to keep flipping back and forth, they're, you know, they're not called the Harmony Sugarland Cluster, right?
Right.
There are three different types, but you, you'll understand where they are because most of them are named Harmony Sugarland, or Harmony Innovation Sugarland or something like that. So there is a map, page 220.
Okay. And then, I don't know, and I didn't notice all of that before, but I'll definitely do some due diligence on that. You know, I find it interesting that between 2015 and 2020, that there was a 71% increase in Fort Bend students transferring out. And if I think back, and I don't recall the exact year it happened, but I want to say Fort Bend stopped doing inter-district transfers, wasn't that in 2014 that that happened? Because it used to be open if, if a campus was under 80%. And then it changed. Does anybody recall what year that happened?
I do not. I, and so you're talking about inter-district in terms of-
But intra, with the intra-district transfers within.
Within Fort Bend, so one Fort Bend school to another.
Yes, and we, Fort Bend historically had intra-district transfers if a campus was under 80% utilization. And I don't recall the exact year. I want to say it's roughly around that timeframe where it ceased. I, I'm asking if anybody knows-
Yeah.
-when that happened.
I do not. I, I started here in 2013. I do not remember that, but we'll do some digging on the team and see if we can find that information out.
Ms. Malone, the only thing I can tell you is that local policy, that local policy, I think it's FDB, was last revised in 2014.
Then I think it's 2014, which is interesting, and so back to the map of seeing that, and then if we could see the utilization of those schools in 2014 and then today, as far as the percentages, I know, if y'all don't mind digging up those old records, I'd really appreciate seeing that so we can kind of see if there's a pattern associated with it, and if that's where maybe some of the loss in students is at.
Yeah, so the, I mean, I can tell you, that 71% increase, that's on, that, that is only charter schools. So from Fort Bend schools, whatever school it is, you know, from the far north to the far south, it's a student who lives here who's now attending a charter school.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that increases, I, I'm going to be the first one to tell you, it's solely due to an expansion of all charter schools in the southwest region of Houston.
Schools that did not exist prior to 2014 that open up, and, and all of a sudden there are 1,000 new seats.
Yes, no, I understand that. I guess what, where I'm going with this and what I'm wondering is, if a student were unable to transfer within Fort Bend, and they were not pleased with their current circumstances, and they had no other Fort Bend option, did they opt to go to the charter school because they deemed that more advantageous for their family? That's it.
Okay. I, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I, I don't know either. I just want to see the numbers and the maps.
But no, I, I get what you're saying now.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, and then last question, or I don't know if it's the last question, but another one. When you mentioned moderate growth of 79, 131, and the housing, housing market remaining stable in 2022, was that with consideration of the Fed's increasing interest rates?
Yeah, it's assuming that interest rates are going to, you know, slowly tick up. Now, if, if for some reason the next two months they go up dramatically, then I would look at that low growth for sure. But at this moment in time, we're not seeing any sort of sign that it's going to just all of a sudden change in the next month or two. Just remember also, most new housing that affects student enrollment, you know, that growth occurs during the spring and summer. So, you know, unless something happens pretty quickly, very dramatically, I would kind of stick with that moderate growth rate.
Okay, gotcha. And then, over in the hot zone in the south corner with Leonetti and Heritage, Heritage Rose and all of that, I guess, I'm a little bit confused on this because I think we have elementary school 54 already in the works and under construction. So is there a reason we didn't add that or include that capacity in the excess students, like, in that number?
It's one of the, the three or four that could be used in that, in that area. So it, actually, on this screen, on this map, you can see it just under the three and 237 for Leonetti. So if you look at the Leonetti label, it says 237%, and just underneath that three is a gray box or a blob, that's the school site.
So on the elementary long-range planning, the capacity of 66, 39 includes elementary school 54?
No, no.
Okay.
So, elementary school 54 is considered one of the three or four elementaries needed in the next 10 years. This is just looking at current capacity.
So then that 33, 29 is a better number for us? The 33, 29, that, that capacity issue, it would be alleviated some by that school?
Yes.
All right.
Yes, that's the first step.
Okay, sounds good. And then I guess the same thing is to be said with Crawford High School that's already underway. Okay, and thank you very much for your presentation. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Malone. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Dr. Pera and Mr. Silhavy. Very informative presentation. I'm just going to piggyback on what Trustee Malone said. Your presentation points to the fact that we need roughly four new elementary schools, one of which is under construction, Elementary 54, one new middle school, one new high school, which is also under construction. And, and that's based on, that's the moderate growth over the next 10 years. Okay. Dr. Whitbeck, just a question for you or Mr. Bassett. Am I correct in understanding that charter schools, which already have a license in Texas, can be, can have a charter expanded by the Commissioner of Education? And they can find property wherever they wish, if you will, and they are funded by the state of Texas to build a new facility? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's our, our understanding.
So they, they don't have to pass a bond in order to build a new facility? The state gives them money to do it?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's a little bit different than what we have to go through. And I had one other question, and a thought slipped out of my mind. I don't recall what it was. At any rate, thank you for this presentation, and I think that really does cover all my questions. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
My question is for Justin. Justin, I'm a resident in the Sugar Grove area of Pearland. Can you tell me why that subdivision is not listed here?
Is, is that the one just south of Shadow Creek? Did you say Shadow Grove?
Yes.
Okay, wait, um, well, I mean, it's built out, so I didn't talk about it today in terms of new housing. And that was, uh, that one, I believe, built out about a year ago or so. So, but we do have information on it in chapter two and chapter three, you know, number of students coming from it, you know, things like that, the ratio of students. So we do have information on it in, in chapter three mostly.
In chapter three?
Yeah, so that's the current student chapter. Is there anything in particular you'd like to know about it?
Yes, I'm concerned about the number of students attending out of that particular subdivision, because we do have buses there picking up the students.
Sure, I'll tell you exactly how many students. Shadow Grove, Che, I think it's Cheddar Grove Preserve, is that it? I think maybe the sign says preserve, but that's it. It's in 240, yep. So there are 380 homes, average home was built in 2017. This school year, we have 76 students total, 36 of which are elementary-aged, and 40 are secondary school students.
Okay, got it. And you said that I can find the rest of that data in chapter three of this book.
Correct. Page 208 is where I pulled that information from. And there are other maps in that chapter as well around that page.
That would do, right, because I'm concerned with this particular feeder pattern because I'm speaking with the parents, and they are choosing not to enroll their kids into Fort Bend because of the quality of schools their kids would be attending. So I was just needing accurate information so I can speak with Mr. Bassett and also with Dr. Mensah on how we can improve the schools that would be zoned to that feeder pattern so we won't continue to lose them to Alvin. So I'm just needing more clarity on that particular subdivision, because we have some bright students over here, and they're just not sending their kids to our schools.
Sure. So, yeah, you'll see it named Shadow Grove Preserve. That's the way we have it named. I think that's the official name of the subdivision.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Justin.
Okay, well, thank you both. We appreciate it. Justin, I have to go back in history when, when you actually worked for the district, and when you used to talk about developing all that prison land, I thought you were crazy.
Well, thanks, Dave.
But, but you're not. I guess I was the one who was crazy. Anyway, thank you both. This is, whatever the, the adjectives I used last time, it's also challenging as well. So, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Next, we have board member reports. Dr. Gilliam?
The board member district activities report. Board members this month have attended or participated in the following. Meeting to discuss public feedback and recommendation for Sinal Butcher Elementary School, Elementary and Secondary Toy Teacher of the Year application judging, meetings with FBISD staff regarding On Data Suite, and Board Construction and Land Use Committee, Fort Bend Chamber Chairman's Gala, FBISD Honor Choir Elementary Festival, Ridge Point High School Theater Productions of Heather's, National Signing Day Event, 2022 Stringfling, Gulf Coast Area Association of School Board Region Four Grassroots Meeting, Houston Galveston Area Council Annual Meeting, Houston Metro Go Texan Fort Bend Stafford Wranglers and Rhinestones Dinner Dance, Shack Meeting, Shack Advocacy Subcommittee, Student Leadership 101 Session Five, Gulf Coast Area Association of School Board Meeting, Elementary Teacher of the Year Classroom Observations, Secondary Teacher of the Year Classroom Observations, Board Policy Committee Meeting, Hunter's Glen All-In Mentoring, Pandemic Response Team, Gulf Coast Region Destination Imagination Executive Board Meeting, Gulf Coast Region Destination Imagination Tournament and Awards Ceremony, Dulles High School Lady Viking Soccer Match, and Kids Say the Darnedest Things at Sienna Crossing Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gilliam. Do we have any special reports this evening? Okay. All right, time for our consent agenda. Do any board members need to pull anything off from-
Do any board members need to pull anything off from Section 8?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Could I pull 8A and 8B?
Okay. Anything else?
I need AB, I'm sorry, 8F. As in front.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety as presented with the exceptions of Items 8A, 8B, and 8F as presented.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rice, a second by Ms. Hannon. Please vote.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 7-0. Okay. Can we get a motion for 8A, please?
Mr. President, I move to approve consent agenda, Item 8A as presented.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Rice, a second by Ms. Hannon. Do we have discussion? Ms. Hannon?
Yes, sir, thank you. And we are 8A, the District of Innovation Renewal Plan.
Right.
I know I asked about this during the agenda review, but in light of what we, you know, just heard from PASA and the potential to lose more students to charter schools, I just, I dug a little deeper today because I wanted to understand the difference between what we could do under the District of Innovation versus what we could do under FEC and EI Local or, you know, legal and local as far as extenuating circumstances and, and, you know, principal-approved plans for kids that fall below that 90% attendance. So, you know, it looks like we already have some opportunity there to help our kids, obviously, but it's, those, to me, seem very reactive. Like, how do we help kids who have gotten into a situation where, you know, they have fallen below 90%, but they need help? And so thinking about how we can compete as a district, and, you know, I want to stay in my lane as a board member, but how we might possibly be leveraging policy, especially maybe under EI Local. I know it says it's not been updated since 2016. I'm not sure that is where we would leverage policy. But when I'm thinking about approving a District of Innovation plan, especially that 90% rule, I'm wondering how we will actually utilize this in a way that, that we can perhaps be more attractive to someone who is not, you know, typically looking for the five days a week face-to-face school situation. Or maybe they're looking for face-to-face, but not, not in the traditional sense that we're delivering instruction. So I guess this isn't, there is a question. I'm actually asking Dr. Whitbeck and staff if they can help support the board in how do we, you know, how can we leverage policy? Or how do, how does staff leverage procedures? Or how do we leverage community input to actually utilize this for the next five years? The piece of the innovative, you know, the word says it all, right? How can we innovate using, using that piece? Because I, again, I'm not sure that we've used that over the last five years, am I correct?
You are correct, Ms. Hannon. There was not a plan that fully was implemented to fully take advantage of that statutory requirement being able to be waived. And that was an intentional decision at the time based on staff capacity and other areas of focus. And then, of course, the last two and a half years have occurred, which has given us an opportunity to see the flexibilities, you know, that we are able to use through technology. So I would say that that's the next step that staff will go through is to be able to look at what are all the ways in which these statutory requirements that we're asking to be waived can be used to innovate and to create situations for students that we don't have in place already, in addition to those that we do have in place. So I appreciate you for bringing that up because that will go along with our policy review and with what we do to determine next steps and actions through the DOI.
Okay, that's, that's very, that's very good to hear because I do think that we have an opportunity to really capitalize on some innovation, especially for maybe some of our highly capable learners who, who might benefit from a non-traditional setting or some, you know, students, you know, that, you know, maybe we have students that, that compete profession, you know, at a, at a higher level in athletic sports, Olympic sanctioned sports. You know, I just think we have some opportunity there. And so, you know, again, I just, I really would like some help to think about how we can really leverage our policy in getting us a little bit further down the road. Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Ms. Hannon. So I think that's, that would be interesting. It'd be interesting to know whether there are charter schools and what their policies are for attendance and things like that. And I know Mrs. James and I used to have conversations about some, maybe like virtual hybrid type, type schools where, you know, kids get in, there's an instructor, so it's kind of in person, but they're kind of learning at their own pace. And, you know, it's in a building with, with actual teachers there as well in person for kids who, you know, just want to get through it and, and leave, maybe even in three years, you know, for high school. So there have been some discussions, not necessarily formal, you know, in this room. But, so, yeah, so that's, thank you. Any other discussion, questions?
I do, I need to add something to that. I needed to know, when did the DOI plan first become policy in Fort Bend ISD? When did we first initiate the plan?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, Ms. Williams. It was approved by the board or adopted by the board first, our initial innovation plan in March of 2017. And then the policies that were associated with the statutory requirements that were waived per the local innovation plan were then updated to include specific verbiage that that particular policy was impacted by our District of Innovation plan. So that'll be another step, a next step once, if the board approves the local innovation plan, that we would update those policies accordingly.
Right, and that was just one of my concerns is the fact that, as a trustee, I'm going to vote on this and I'm looking at our legal counsel, what from Morris Grover. I don't feel like I had representation, someone who can help me understand what the DOI is about. It's like, we have one law firm playing both sides and I'm needing help understand. I understand some of it, but I don't understand really the nuts involved, how we're going to be protected when we have non-HQ teachers on Title I campuses. There's so many questions I need answered and we were not, at least I wasn't afforded the opportunity. So, again, that's all I had to add to it. I'm going to be a no vote, not because I don't support it, it's because my questions wasn't answered or I didn't have the legal representation to assist me. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mrs. Malone?
Yeah, I feel like I just need to chime in a bit on the 90% attendance and the innovative aspect as far as trying to retain students long-term or for those high-achieving or athletes or whatever it may be across the gamut. Maybe they're trying to work, et cetera, for their family. That I too would like that looked into a bit. I think it would have been useful 20 years ago for myself. But with hearing some of the students at the high school level and what their, their goals are and different things that kids are doing, that it makes sense to take a deeper dive into that and see if there's something that we could do that would maybe benefit these students.
Thank you for that input. And as we move forward on the planning, we'll be able to provide updates in the board, in the weekly board updates as we move forward in that project planning.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Malone. Okay. Let's vote. This is for Consent Agenda 8A. Okay, motion carries 6-2-1. Okay. Can I get a motion on Consent Agenda Item 8B, please?
Mr. President, I move to approve Consent Agenda 8B as presented.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice, a second by Ms. Hannon. Ms. Hannon, would you like to start the discussion?
Yes, I just have one question. And it's regarding the Mission Bend Elementary site, the collaboration with Baker Ripley. I just want to understand the two agency. I understand that the agency is providing the portable buildings at Mission Bend Elementary, but I want to understand why because I think the capacity, and I'm just off the top of my head, it's like 48%. And so I'm wondering why we would have those children outside.
Thank you for your question, Ms. Hannon. We've held a partnership with Baker Ripley for over a decade in Mission Bend, and they currently offer the Pre-K 3 program on their T-b buildings. That is the reason why the students currently are there. We're exploring other options for next year and we will be preparing a proposal to evaluate that situation.
Okay, and so I just, I just want to comment that when, when a building is at less than half-capacity, you know, I think for safety, and I have to admit, I've never seen the buildings. I don't, don't know what they're like. I don't, are they like, are they like a usual T-shack? Are they?
Yeah, they are like the...
Do they have restroom facilities?
No, they don't.
They don't have restroom facilities? Do they have changing facilities?
No, because we only have Pre-K 3 students there.
Okay, Pre-K through, through third grade?
No, 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 students who are three years old.
The three years old. But the three-year-olds do not have to be toilet-trained to be part of that program, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I still, I still, you know, I'm voting on this tonight and my apologies for not, you know, we have a lot to read. I mean, everybody, so I missed this last time when I read. And I still go back to, I know that this is, you know, a partnership with Baker Ripley, but at the end of the day, when we have three-year-olds through Pre-K in a portable building and then they have to go inside to go to the restroom in a building that's less than half, at half-capacity, I personally, you know, thinking about the safety of students, thinking about the physical health of students, thinking about the logistics of being a teacher of young children, that's, that is, that's a concern for me.
Absolutely. And thank you for, for your concern.
Thank you.
We will get the board clarification on that. I think we would all agree that we always prefer kids inside, all kids. What my, my guess at this point is that this was driven by Baker Ripley. And oftentimes, as I've seen different things used by region service centers and different agreements, often it is them who wish it because then they can control the hours for which their people can come up on Saturdays or stay late and not be hooked to our systems where they're locked and alarms go off and things like that. But I will make sure we put that in the next, in the next board update.
And if I may, I know that, I understand that as well, but I do know that sometimes, even if it's a partnership with Baker Ripley, you know, parents who are part of any Pre-K program sometimes are like the stepchildren. They're not really part of, they're not, because maybe they're not zoned at a specific school, so they, they aren't as welcomed. Not maybe intentionally by staff or, but sometimes PTO things. And I just think the more that we include the children where we can actually, you know, when they're seen, even though the... I just, I just think that's a very, very important aspect of, of, you know, the building trust and the experience that people, that, that parents get and their children get when they come here. Thank you.
We are absolutely seeking for more alignment and improvement in the program in, for the next year.
It could also help keep those kids in Fort Bend ISD. Okay, any other questions, comments on 8B?
I had a quick question on that. I was concerned about the fees that were going to be charged to Baker Ripley. What would happen to the fees? What's the purpose of the fee charging, the $4,000?
The fees that we charge to Baker Ripley are to recoup the cost of electricity and maintenance of the facility when we do the janitorial work and assist them in that respect.
Okay. And I'm just asking a question because I don't know the answer. But if they're going to have their own buildings, how will it go toward the maintenance? Are you going to clean their T-b buildings as well, is what I'm hearing?
In some cases, we do provide that type of assistance. In this particular instance, we would have to provide that information back to you. But for certain, it would be for the utility costs associated with the, the building.
Okay, so $4,000 would go toward utilities per month. Okay, also, the ending date, are we doing the MOU just for the ending of July of 2022? This is not for the '22, '23 school year, correct?
That's correct, Ms. Williams. Only through the end of this school year.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up because this is obviously February and this is a late agreement, but the staff has been waiting on this from Baker Ripley. So just upon receiving it, we now are bringing it forward. So we prefer to do it in, in advance before the school year starts. So we'll start working now on any agreements for the next school year.
Right, because that was concern, that was a concern for me when I looked it up and it started talking about Labor Day. And I'm like, wait, Labor Day is over with. So I was somewhat confused on that. So thank you, that answered my question as it relates to that particular item. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, please vote on 8B.
Yes.
Hey, motion carries 7-0. Can we get a motion on 8F, please?
Mr. President, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item 8F as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice, a second by Dr. Gilliam. Do we have questions? Ms. Williams, did you have a question on this?
Yes, I sure did. My question is, if we're giving the 41 million out of the bond, we previously gave 32 million out of the general fund, that leaves us giving 8 million more. What's the difference? What are we going to do with the additional 8 million? What are we going to do with that?
Yes, ma'am. Let me just pull up my... So the 32 million was a committed fund balance and it doesn't tie to the 41. The 41 is the proposed budget, 454, in, in order to build it. So when, whenever we came to the board previously, we did a projection on how much we would spend because we didn't want to overcommit the general fund. And so we felt that by the time we passed the next bond, we would not expand more than the 32,820. And so that's, that's the difference in the dollar amount.
I understand the difference because I basically subtracted it. What I'm trying to get at is the fact that we gave 32,820 initially. I heard from someone up there today who stated, "Construction has already begun." So if construction has already begun, I'm perplexed... I'm perplexed as to why are we giving 41 million more dollars? What's going to happen to the 32,820?
The 32,820 is absorbed into the 41. It's part of the overall budget. If, if you look at the exhibit, it'll show you, we have, you know, other costs that are associated, not only the construction costs, we have architectural costs, engineering costs, the furniture that goes in. So the overall budget is what totals up to the 41 million.
Right, but what I'm stating is that when we gave you the 32, why didn't you ask for 41? Why was it a sudden increase?
Ms. Williams, at the time that we did the resolution, it was specifically to cover the anticipated cost of construction only, and that would be funded on a temporary basis from the general fund. And at the point at which a bond was passed and those costs that the general fund had borne, which were estimated to be at the 32.8 million, would then be reclassified back to the bond and relieving the general fund. And so as Mr. Perez pointed out, we're not, it's basically shifting these costs back over to the bond that we anticipated would be paid out of the general fund.
So we're just changing the 32 million for the 41 million is basically what I'm hearing? Or is that not correct?
We're taking the 32.8 million dollars that we anticipated we would loan ourselves from the general fund and taking it out of the general fund and moving it back to bond funds. And so at the end of the day, the total, the total project budget was always 41 million. However, we only anticipated funding the 32 million from the general fund.
So what, so it makes, it makes sense to me. What, the 32 million is going to go back to the general fund, correct? Not the bond fund?
No, ma'am, to the bond fund. It is currently funded on a temporary basis out of the general fund. So it will go from the general fund back to the bond.
The 41 million is supposed to come, you're, you're doing, Elementary School 52 is 41 million dollars. So what I, what I read is that you're going to use that bond money to cover Elementary School 54. Correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, so if you're using that 41 out of the bond that was already designated for 52, why don't you put the 32 back in the general fund? Why are you taking that back to the bond?
Because the general fund was not intended to fund the construction of Elementary 54. It was always anticipated as a bond project. However, based on the growth that occurred in the Riverstone area, it occurred more quickly than what we anticipated. Conversely, the growth that would have supported Elementary 52 did not occur. And so we're recommending that we shift the funding from 54, or I'm sorry, from 52 to 54 from the bond funds. And so that's the reason that we are transferring those funds back from the general fund to the bond funds. Again, the general fund was never intended to fund either school, 52 or 54.
It was never intended to fund it, but we voted for you to take it out the general fund. It's not making sense to me because you, you go to 52, we're allowing you to have the money from Elementary 52, take the 41 million dollars, that's fine. Now, I'm just trying to find out when is the general fund going to get its 32 million dollars back?
And the action that you would be taking this evening would be to relieve the general fund of that obligation. The action item that the board approved was an intent to reimburse from future bond proceeds. And so the general fund temporarily, and I'm putting finger quotes around this, loans the bond funds, the funding to, to, to construct the school until such time that a bond is passed. And so this is essentially making the general fund whole for that, those anticipated costs.
Got it, got it. Okay, okay, so you literally didn't take the 32 out of the general fund. It was an anticipated loan?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
From the bond proceeds?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
Got it. I don't know about this one, Brian. Okay, so I'm, I'm just stuck on the overrun, but that's not, you hear, not there. But I do understand that the bond 52 is not going to be built. Therefore, we're not using any general funds to build a school?
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the general fund?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. And the only caveat that I would add to 52 is at this point, the growth does not support its construction. At some point in the future, we will likely come back based on the presentation you just saw from PASA, and it would likely result in the necessity of that school. But at this time, the growth in that area does not support an additional campus.
And we won't have any type of ties to this 31, 32 million. So if our schools needed this money, it's not tied into ES 52. This comes back to the district in the general fund, correct?
Yes, ma'am. And it was specifically, it's in general fund, fund balance, not as a general operating expenditure. So the general fund, fund balance now no longer carries that obligation.
Got it, understood. Thank you, Mr. Williams, thank you. Understood.
Okay, any more discussion questions? Okay, please vote on 8F.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries seven oh. Okay, at this time, the board will now convene in closed session under Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, under the following sections. Point 071, for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Point 072, consider purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Point 074, personnel matters. Point 076, security matters. Point 082, student discipline matter or complaint. Point 0821, personally identifiable information about a public school student. Board is now convening in closed session.
Okay. Current time is 9:05 PM and we are now reconvened in open session. There are actions to consider from closed section. Can we get a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Trustees assign the Level III Employee Grievance Appeal of Lori Suter to Myra Schach Snyder, who will serve as the Board's designated hearing officer under Board Policy DGBA Local.
I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice, second by Mrs. Malone. Okay, do we have discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
How many grievances have we had Ms. Schach Snyder here for this academic year? How many has she heard? Myra.
Ms. Williams, I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't have a precise number with me this evening, but we can provide that.
Is she our only hearing? Is she our only hearing officer?
Currently, yes ma'am.
So however many hearings we had this year, she's the only person you have contracted with?
That's been the Board's direction to the administration, yes.
To use one person. Okay, the second question is, do you have any record of how backed up we are as it relates to hearing grievances?
Yes ma'am, we have that.
How many grievances are in the pipeline?
We have that information. I would be guessing to give you a number right now, and I'd rather not speculate, but I can get that information to the Board also.
Okay, because she is a neutral party. Is she with any particular law firm that does extra business with the district?
No ma'am, she is not. She is a licensed attorney who does not have any ongoing business with the district, and her only activity, she has served as a hearing officer for other districts in the area.
But she's our only one?
Yes ma'am.
Now if this individual wanted to have a neutral party hear it, is it possible for her to have an outside hearing officer hear this other district? Schach Snyder?
Well, Ms. Schach Snyder is a neutral party designated by the Board, acting in the Board's behalf. And so if the grievant had an objection to Ms. Schach Snyder, that would be something that would be, she'd have to bring forward, and she's not, she's not made any objection to that.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, you said that the Board has decided to have only one hearing officer? Because I can't recall doing it, and I've been here for 16 months.
I don't recall precisely when Ms. Schach Snyder was engaged by the Board, but when our previous hearing officer was elected to the Court of Appeals, he resigned, and that's when Ms. Schach Snyder came in. So I want to say it was in 2019.
And that's what I was going to state as well, because I had a hearing, two hearings before her prior to being elected. And she's anything but neutral. But I will say this to the public, the time is now. You guys need to stand up, because what's going on is not right.
Hey, do we have any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
And I'm a no.
Motion carries six to one. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
This meeting is now adjourned.